A meeting of the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, Monday, November 22, 2010, at 7:30 PM is called to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first part of this evening's meeting is a continuation of the November 15 swearing-in ceremony. Councilwoman Fogarty was unable to attend that evening, so tonight we will swear her in. I will preside over the meeting until the election of the President of the Town Council, and then I will pass the gavel for the rest of the meeting. At this time, Kathy, would you rise?
Raise your right hand. Do solemnly swear or affirm to be true and faithful to the United States and to what the laws and Constitution there are, to the laws and Constitution of the State of Rhode Island, and support the Charter and Ordinances of the Town of South Kingstown, and well and truly execute your office as a member of the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown until November 2012. You'll be going to discharge from that way. And last one, my dear. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. The next item of business will be the nominations for President of the Town Council. Do I hear any nominations, Mrs. Eddy?
I nominate Ellen Waley.
Are there any other nominations, Mrs. McAtee?
I nominate Ella Whaley.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare that nominations are now closed. And we will vote on the nominations before us until we have a majority of the newly-elected Town Council members vote in the affirmative for the nomination before them. All those in favor of Kathleen Fogarty being President of the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown until November 2012 or until legally discharged therefrom, signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, we will have to have a roll call vote. Councilwoman Eddy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Aye.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Nay.
Councilman O'Neill?
Nay.
Councilwoman Whaley?
Nay.
The vote is two ayes and three nays. The nomination fails. We will move on to the next nomination. All those in favor of Ella Whaley being President of the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown until November 2012 or until legally discharged therefrom, signify by saying aye. All opposed signify by saying nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Two abstentions and three ayes, Mrs. -- we will have a roll call vote. Councilwoman Eddy?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Abstain.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilwoman Whaley?
Aye.
It is declared that Ella M. Whaley is elected President of the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown until November 2012 or until legally discharged therefrom.
I'd like to just start by congratulating all of the elected officials tonight and thanking Kathy for her two years of leadership here at the Town Council table. And I would like to open nominations for Vice President of the Town Council. I would like to make the nomination for Kathy Fogarty. She's interested for Vice President.
I respectfully decline.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go with our years of service and offer it a nomination for Polly Eddy if she's interested.
No, thank you.
And the third nomination that I'd like to make is for Carol Hagan-Mackenty.
No problem.
Any more nominations for Vice President? I'd like to, at this time, close the nominations for Vice President. And all in favor of Carol Hagan-Mackenty, please respond aye, and if you are not, please respond nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. We have Carol Hagan-Mackenty.
I think you need a roll call vote.
My apologies. Could we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Council President Whaley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Abstain.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill?
Aye.
Congratulations. We have a Vice President of the Town Council, Carol Hagan-Mackenty.[414.81][414.81](Applause). Dale, I don't -- do we need to do a roll call, are we all set?
It's on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move to approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of November 8, 2010.
I move approval of the work session from?
November 8.
November 8, 2010.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0. We have approval of the minutes of previous meetings, the regular session, November 8 and November 15.
I make a motion to approve the regular session on the 8th and the 15th?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0-0. Would anybody consider removing anything from the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Seeing none, Madam President, I move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in second for the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing relative to proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance as follows. Article 8 Signs, Section 803, Signs Prohibited in All Zoning Districts, and the following signs shall not be permitted in any zoning district. And we have Item B, flashing signs, signs which incorporate in any manner any flashing or moving illumination, animation, or illumination which varies in color. This shall include, but not limited to, electronic messaging boards, centers animated or intermittent, LED light emitting diode type signs, digital programmable ink, and all other electronic changeable copy signs. So, I'd like to see if there are any comments or questions. We're looking at this public hearing tonight to possibly change the sunset date from November 22, 2010, to May 24, 2011. And I'm going to defer to Steve, or Vin, Vin?
Good evening. Simply put, tonight's public hearing is intended to consider a recommendation from the Planning Board that was also discussed by the Economic Development Committee and the Ad-Hoc Committee on Signage to extend the sunset date of this particular aspect of the ordinance from this evening until May 24. And the reason for the requested extension of the sunset date is to allow for additional time to study what we're finding to be a very complicated issue. I think the Planning Board's recommendation actually put it well, was from their correspondence of October 13, that such extension of the current ordinance will permit town staff and boards the opportunity to perform a comprehensive review and make recommendations on the complex issues associated with the use and regulatory environment associated with light emitting diode type signage. In our reviews to date, we have found no real clear path. It seems like this is a new ground being broken, and so additional time, I think, will enable us to provide a more concise and useful recommendation going forward. There are, we have two of the signs in the town that were established under, before the ordinance took effect, and there was one at the University of Rhode Island, over at Keene Gym as well, but, you know, that's on state property and not subject to our regulation. But basically, you know, to reiterate, it's an extension of time, nothing more, nothing less, and we'll be working on it in the interim if this is successful before the council this evening.
That's great. Do we have any questions at the Town Council table? Jim?
Yeah, Vin, is there any way anyone else can be grandfathered into this? Any applications that may come to you pending?
There are no applications pending or inquiries received either through the Planning Department or the Building Officials' Office in this respect, so.
So for those in the out watching this tonight, businesses, right now, nothing would be approved on a grandfathering basis?
Right, right. I mean, it's, that type of signage is currently not permitted until midnight tonight anyway, so, yeah.
Polly? And did I understand you to say we have no control over the university sign?
That's correct.
Because of government?
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Vin.
Any other questions or comments at the Town Council table? I just want to thank the staff. I know that you're working hard and working with multiple groups and putting this together, so, appreciation for, you know, making this a reality and really looking at it in the scientific, you know, the research that goes with it, so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to open, any comments or questions from the floor? Okay, at this time, seeing that this, on this, Bob, is it on this issue?
Yes.
Okay, please come to the mic, state your name, even though we know you.
I don't have a lot to say. I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda, but I, I feel, Bob Trager, Suckitash wrote, "First comment that was made, this is a very delicate issue." And as I read it before the meeting started, I was thinking the same thing, so I'm glad somebody else is thinking the same thing that's in charge of this, because this is the kind of thing that, do I like neon signs flashing? No. But do I believe that it's my right to prevent someone from having something like an open sign that shows that they're open when things are tough right now? I mean, I understand the feeling behind this, but I just want you to really think this thing over. I think it's just an invasion of people's rights again, and I think it's just one more step. Instead of worrying about signs, let's worry about increasing or figuring out how we can make our economy work. Do you watch the programs? I mean, I haven't heard a good thing, and I've listened to quite a bit. I listen to people talk all over the country on, in the morning, and it's, we're in big trouble. Let's not worry about neon signs and flashing lights. Let's get into the business. Let's have something on the agenda that is forward-reaching. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any further comments on this topic from the floor? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Could we have a motion to approve the public hearing? Way that it's submitted, with the sunset date?
There's actually a proposed motion in the Planning Department memorandum that you have this evening. It's dated November 16.
I'll read it. It says, "The Town Council hereby directs the Town Clerk to give order of notice for a public hearing to consider amendments Article 8 Signs in the South Kingstown zoning ordinance concerning sandwich board signs."
Second?
Oh, no, I read the wrong one.
Yeah, yeah, that's the wrong one, right.
All right, just a, whoops, the wrong page. The Council approves public hearing item A concerning the South Kingstown zoning board Article 8, Section 803, Signs Prohibited in All Zoning Districts, flashing signs. Said amendments extend to sunset provision 803B from the current date of November 22 to May 24, and approving those amendments to the Council specifically incorporates and references the recommendations contained in the Planning Board correspondence on the subject dated October 13, 2010. Sorry, pulled the wrong one out.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, Kathy. Which brings us to communications. A communication dated September 22, 2010, from Keith W. Stokes, Executive Director, Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation, in response to the Council's resolution adopted on September 13, 2010 regarding the Economic Development Committee's Job Creation Guarantee Program, and requesting an opportunity to address the Council is continued from October 12, 2010, and the Town Council further directs. Carol?
We discussed this at the work session, and we've agreed, I believe the Town Manager is going to call Keith Stokes and see if Tuesday, December 7 works at 7:00 PM.
Any further discussion at the Town Council table? Jim?
Yeah, I certainly would like, certainly want to make sure that we extend an invitation to our own Economic Development Board, Chamber of Commerce. I think that'd be very important to get as many business interests here as possible.
Okay, I'm sure that we'll do that. And he tomorrow morning is also speaking at the chamber, I believe, at 8:30. So, eight o'clock? Eight o'clock? Okay, so do we have a motion to place that on file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Communication B, a communication dated November 8, 2010, from Kristen Lombardi, Rhode Island Hope Program, requesting an opportunity to address the Council regarding the resources that are still available to citizens affected by the March floods, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs, and I believe that Kristen may be here to Welcome.
Good evening. I'm actually not Kristen Lombardi. I'm Joanne Giorgi. I'm a team leader with the Rhode Island Hope Program in the South County area. I'm here to speak with you tonight about the Rhode Island Hope Program. It's a program created to provide assistance to the people impacted by the disastrous floods of March 2010, and you may wonder why we're getting started now, six months after the Research has actually shown that people affected by traumas such as our flood continue to have significant needs for quite some time after the actual disaster, and in some cases, people don't immediately realize how much damage they've been through, or, for various reasons, they don't apply for assistance that's available at the time. Rhode Island Hope is funded by a grant from the Federal Crisis Counseling Program and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. This is the first time that Rhode Island's ever gotten such a grant, and it can only be awarded after the, after a presidential disaster declaration, in which individual assistance to homeowners has been provided by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. It's important to note that Rhode Island Hope doesn't have any money to give. We give no monetary assistance, and that we also are not soliciting donations from anyone. So, given that we don't have any money, what do we do? We actually communicate with Rhode Islanders affected by the flood for two reasons, to share contact information with them for agencies that can assist them by providing tangible or emotional support, and to provide educational presentations, materials, and emotional support to victims. And how do we do it? Rhode Island Hope outreach workers make it happen. I have actually an outreach worker here with me tonight, Tom Buchard. Our outreach workers have actually begun canvassing in neighborhoods and in various locations where people gather, like senior centers, community fairs, chambers of commerce, neighborhood associations, and anywhere else where we may be invited. We've been at grocery stores and in front of retail establishments trying to find the people affected. We provide a supportive presence, educational information about how people normally respond to disaster situations such as floods, and coping, show people the coping skills they can use to get through the situation. Rhode Island Hope will be visiting most cities and towns in the next five or six months. All outreach workers, you should know, have been carefully selected and screened. They've all passed both the Rhode Island BCI and national fingerprinting conducted by local police departments. They've also completed five days of community outreach training, provided by trainers approved by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and they have also gotten additional training through other state agencies to prepare them to deliver quality and effective services. Rhode Island Hope has already begun working in South County, in South Kingstown. We've provided a letter of introduction from Susan Early, the State Disaster Behavioral Health Coordinator and the Director of Rhode Island Hope, as well as a copy of each outreach worker's ID badge to the local police department. We want to really ensure the safety of our workers and all of the people in your town. Informing town officials of our presence is not only a safety precaution, but it's a great way of letting the community know that we're here to offer our supportive services. I have a copy of the Rhode Island Hope brochure for everyone that you can look at, and the copy of the letter from Susan Early, and if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jim?
Size of your grant?
I actually, you'd have to ask Susan Early. I don't exactly have the numbers.
And is it a continuing annual, or is it a one-time grant?
It's a one-time grant. Will be here through the end of April. There are three regions where, the South County region.
Polly?
What do you expect to be your most common problem?
We have actually already completed, pretty much completed, Westerly, going door-to-door, and also at various events. We found mold mitigation is still a big issue. We found economic. Somebody already mentioned how bad the economy is. This on top of the bad economy has pushed some people really to the edge, and we're trying to help them find the resources. We've helped people find wheelchairs, or, you know, all sorts of things, but it is a lot still of mold issues that people didn't address, or economic problems.
Kathy?
Joanne, you're going to leave us some information, so if there are people who can contact, you could hear at Town Hall.
Yes, there's, we have a number, we have the brochures for you. If you need any other brochures or information, we'll be happy to drop them off for you.
Have you been contacted by anybody in South Kingstown, do you know, off the top of your head? If there's, do you have any numbers of anybody so far who might have found you already?
You mean from South Kingstown?
Yes.
I, no. We have actually been at the Y and done a little bit of outreach, but not a lot. We're just finishing up Westerly, which was a huge, yeah, problem, and coming into this area, so.
Any other questions at the Town Council table? Jim?
Yeah, you, actually, when you said you went door-to-door in Westerly, so you actually interview?
Yes.
You really, really get to the heart of the matter, whether it's a job issue or just a home issue, okay.
Yeah, that's the, our main means of outreach is to actually send teams of two people, actually, we have four teams of two people knocking on doors in the areas that.
That's terrific. And have you identified the areas which were the obvious problems from the flood, or have you really covering a broader reach than that?
We actually have lists of the addresses that had applied for FEMA money, and although we don't have names or, or actual addresses, we have the streets that were involved, so we have maps that we highlight the hardest-hit places, and that's where we sort of concentrate.
Any more questions? I just have one question, Joanne. Is there any kind of a connection with our healthcare providers in town to see if there's an uprise in any allergies? Is there any kind of a connection?
We haven't actually done that. We have contacted, though, a lot of the cap agencies, the Johnny Cake Centers. We do go to the hospitals, and we don't really compile that data in terms of allergies or whatever, but we actually have had a few people with, you know, allergy problems due to the mold.
Great. All right, well, it's a comfort to know that we have some services and resources available here in South Kingstown, so we thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank Tom also for coming as well. So, the, would you like to place this, now that we've received the report from Joanne? Do you want to make a motion to place it on file?
I move we place Communication B on file.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0-0. We have one more communication. It's a communication received November 17, 2010, from Councilman James O'Neill, proposing adoption of a resolution to Governor-elect Lincoln Chafee regarding his planned financial policies, is received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. And Jim, if you would like to?
As I mentioned this evening, the work session, I'd like to withdraw it from this evening's agenda. I will resubmit probably for December. Main reason for that is I want to see some further revenue numbers coming out of the state budget offices, and to say the least, my concern with some of the financial and budget solutions he has has got me gravely concerned, but we'll discuss that with my completed resolution. So I withdraw, I ask that we withdraw that from this evening's consideration.
Thank you, Jim. So there's no motion needed. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens.
Hi, I'm Steve Corley.
Hi, I'm Steve Corley, Plains Road. First of all, I just wanted to thank everybody for serving. President of the United States, he gets a parade and a ball, and you guys, you get us. So, but thanks very much for serving, appreciate it. And, uh, signs, I just was, I drive back and forth to work every day, and I love Taylor's Landing. I love the coffee, I love the food, but I don't much like baking pans up on street signs, and I just have a concern if that's legal, then, you know, the Extramar doing that, Susan Sisnowski's, or the Sisnowski Farms farm stand having signs up all over. Just, I just can't see that that's something that we would have and discuss, neon signs. So if they could be asked to be removed, if that's what's necessary, appreciate it. I wanted to thank the town Public Works Department. I called, I had a problem with a culvert pipe behind my house backing up. He thought they couldn't really do anything because it's underneath the Amtrak, but he still came out and took a look anyway, and he said he couldn't do anything because it's under the Amtrak. And, but I called the Amtrak and they took care of it. But I was just very pleased with the professionalism of our townspeople that they could do that. And I also wanted to, we're going to head back into budget seasons and all that kind of stuff, and I just kind of wanted to reiterate that I'd like to see you eliminate the car tax and raise my property tax. The car tax just seems to be too unfair to lower-income people who all have to have a car. Plus, it's unfair to businesses that need vehicles to maintain a business, and I just think it's disproportionate. Plus, it's a pain in my butt, and it's got to be a lot harder to collect than homeowners' taxes, which most banks are paying for us because we're paying the bank. And so I'd like you to consider getting rid of that. And also, you know, I always hype about pensions, and, you know, I really don't have a problem with people having a pension, retiring after a year, and living for the rest of their life after that year. As long as that money came out of the funds they contributed and the funds we contributed once, not to be on the hook for when there's a shortfall, to have to contribute and make up the difference. And as a taxpayer, that's what I'm always afraid of, is sooner or later, as people get to be older and older, that you're going to have five guys retired, one guy working, and you won't be able to pay, and we won't be able to pay. And I just kind of want to say, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments from interested citizens? Bobby?
Well, I just want to congratulate you all for being re-elected, and I'd like to say it was nice to see a little democracy in action in the beginning of the meeting.
Any other comments from interested citizens? Jim?
Yeah, just like to mention a couple wonderful community things that took place. If you and Carol can discuss tonight's Johnny Cake activity. I wanted to thank the Muse Tavern for incredibly successful walk and running race yesterday. Fifteen hundred registrants, a lot of folks from outside of South Kingstown, outside of the Wakefield area. Most of the net benefits go to the Special Olympics, and again, showing all of us what a good neighbor, good business neighbor does for our community. So thank you to the Muse Tavern.
Thank you, Jim. Carol?
I'd just like to also mention that the Community Theater Company put on a fabulous play this past weekend, Alice's Adventures in Wonderland. I think everyone enjoyed it. Had several people attended, and I see Terry Simpson is here, and he was dodo, I believe?
Dodo, yes.
Dodo. You were great, Terry, and it was a great play, and good effort by everyone.
Contemporary Theater Company.
What did I say? The Contemporary Theater Company, sorry about that.
In conjunction with the gear production, correct? In conjunction with the gear production in it?
In conjunction with Gear Productions. We had seventy-one people in the show. Many of the clients, I guess, from the LaPlante Center, there were over forty, I think, people with various disabilities who all participated in the show. We had wonderful costuming. The set design was terrific. It was just a wonderful event. Thank you for mentioning it.
The gift of the Magi, we look forward to it. I just have two announcements. The South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention has a subcommittee, and it is on the post-prom activities for the junior prom, and they have a fundraiser. So I know that Dr. Corcoran in town has been working hard at this, she's co-chairing it. I think it's Kate Manciotti is also working with her. But they have a function that they would like to, for the town to attend, and it is on February fifteenth, seven to nine, and it is a hypnotist. Supposed to be quite comical, seven to nine at the high school. So this is for our junior post-prom activity. And then I also have just some updates from the chamber. They have a blood drive, the Blood Mobile, on Saturday, December fourth, from eleven to two. So we don't need to speak how important that is. I'm also reiterating shop locally, because you know that it helps us here at the town, helps a lot of taxpayers. And I believe Ladies' Night is December second. And you all have at the table tonight, or in your packet, the South Kingstown Chamber of Commerce Business and Community Guide. So that's the update for the chamber. Any further comments from interested citizens? Jim?
I will bring up the Johnny Cake Center, which I'm just amazed every year at the numbers, four hundred twenty-five turkeys they have to give away, they'll all be gone. One hundred turkey cutler dinners on top of that, that will be gone. Dozens of others, contributions of turkeys for needy families in this community. It's a frightening number, six hundred, seven hundred people, when you get through with all of this, who needed our help this season. But anyway, they do a great job, and we've been supportive of them, and what a worthy cause. So I'm always proud of the council for our participation in their events. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. If I can just?
If I can add too, before you go again.
Yep.
Ninety-four tons of food, is what Sue told Polly and I today when we were there for a couple hours helping out. This past year that the Johnny Cake Center gave out, and they are in desperate need. They are very, very low on supplies. Any money donation is greatly accepted. Sue said that for the turkeys, I think they spent five thousand one hundred and change for the turkeys that were being handed out today. And when Polly and I were there, it was nonstop, from, what was it, about twelve fifteen to about, yeah, two o'clock, two fifteen today, and nonstop. And that feeds Sue Gaitanas, who runs the Johnny Cake Center, that could feed two months' worth of meals. That's one day. She said, because nobody else can do this, what we're doing. And she says, so that's a big hit out of her budget. So anybody who wants to do something for the holidays, I really strongly suggest we do it right here at home and drop off a check at the Johnny Cake Center. It was amazing to see. It's a sobering thing, and it really puts your priorities in order when you do something like that, like we did today. I think all the council went at different times, but very sobering. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, let's move on, I guess, to the town manager's report.
I wanted to just confirm the meeting schedule that council said earlier tonight for the month of December. We are looking at this point, it's the tentative date of December seventh, for a meeting with representatives from the State Economic Development Corporation. That is still tentative because we have to get confirmation on their availability. We're also looking at December eighth as being a night for the council to meet with local legislative delegation. The one council meeting, business meeting of the council, will be on December thirteenth, and December twentieth will be the start of the budget process. December twentieth will be the initial budget hearing of the council and the school committee. That is the night that begins the process, and public input is solicited as to where we're going with a budget program for the two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve year. I also wanted to mention that capital budget will be released to the council by December first, God willing, and the budget hearings will begin in early January. We're tentatively scheduled for January fourth, fifth, and the thirteenth on the capital budget. So I want to get those dates out there so that we can get people in attendance for those different meetings. I'll answer any questions on the last two manager reports that have been submitted to the council. If they have any, I'd be glad to answer them at this time. If not, I'll yield the floor to the solicitor.
Town Solicitor's report?
And unless there are any questions, I'm well set, Ellen.
Thank you. Any questions? And we have no appointments tonight, which brings us to new business item E. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to New England Fire Equipment and Apparatus Corporation, Ten Stillman Road, North Haven, Connecticut, for one two thousand and eleven Chevrolet three-five-hundred H. D. ambulance conversion in accordance with bid specifications in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars, including trade-in allowances and other options, and as further described in a memorandum from the EMS Director of the Town Manager dated November seventeenth, two thousand and ten, entitled Bid Recommendation Type One Ambulance. Steve?
The ambulance to be replaced will replace a two thousand and six unit that will then be used as a backup. We'll be trading in a two thousand and two vehicle that has been the backup vehicle. Just for the council's information, we operate two transport ambulances and one utility vehicle. We have to have a backup for the transport ambulance, and we have to have a backup for the utility. So the department operates really with five vehicles, three of which are active at any one time. The capital improvement program spells out a replacement schedule for those vehicles. The next that is scheduled and is recommended for reward tonight is the replacement of a transport ambulance. It will be a Chevrolet two thousand and eleven vehicle chassis that will be the foundation with a customized box that has been designed and is a component of the bidding documents. Two bids were received, one from New England Fire Equipment and Apparatus, and one from Yankee. Both were for the two thousand and eleven Chevrolet vehicle. The low bidder, we are asking to disqualify based on it failing to meet several of the bidding specifications, including electrical warranties, the specified delivery date, payment schedule requirements that were within the bidding documents, as well as failing to meet H. V. A. C. requirements that were spelled out in the documents. With that, we're asking to go with the second bidder at the price net of trade-in at the one hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three, fifty-two dollars as outlined in the director's recommendation to the manager. I support the recommendation as presented, and request council approval as presented.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions on the floor? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve new business item E.
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And I would just like to, from the town council, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and those that are traveling, have a safe journey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you.